I would like to call the Frontier Regional School Committee to order at 7:06. The first, uh, first order of business is that this meeting is being recorded, and any other private recordings must be approved by the school committee. So if anybody's out there recording, need to ask permission to do so. Hearing no one raising their hands, we will continue. I would like to introduce new members to the committee. Bill Joe, Alex. Someone?
Welcome.
Welcome to our team.
I think that is it. You're one of the new guys. So you get called new guy for the first year. All right. First order of business is to reorganize. So I will be taking nominations.
Chair. I nominate Missy Melvack as our new chair.
I got a first and second.
Do we have any other nominations?
I get to do that. I don't care how long you've been chair, you're going to be chair. Any other nominations for chair? Seeing none, closing nominations. All those in favor of Missy elect me chair?
Aight. We lost you again.
All right, testing? Anyone? All right, yours? All right, I don't know why he's doing that.
Volume, she said, what else is it, volume up? Is it all the way up?
It's that max, yeah.
You guys can hear us now?
Yeah.
All right.
You can't just yell.
That's, yeah, that works. Question.
All right. So nominations for vice chair? I nominate Olivia.
I'll second that.
I didn't hear the nomination.
Nomination is Olivia.
Got it, thanks.
I seconded.
Any other nominations?
It's going to use that, it's going to interview us. It's equal nominations.
We're in close nominations and all in favor?
Aight.
Next is secretary.
I nominate Chris White the secretary.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations? Close nominations for secretary, all in favor of Chris?
Aight.
Can we get into budget subcommittee?
All right. And I'm going to presume that that four on there is four folks for?
That's exactly.
All right.
Four people in that committee.
No, that's okay. Easier to cheat on. Wait for it. All right, so we need nominations for the budget subcommittee and four nominations for that. It's not on currently.
Is it, is it an appointed or?
It's appointed, but you, usually the chair will pass for people interested.
Bill, you can do that for subcommittee again?
Uh, if you insist.
Additionally, we try to have one for each town. So that's representative of that budget.
So who, you were on last month too?
Phil's for Conway.
Phil's for Conway. And it needs. And Mary, all right. Everybody want to continue in that space? Yeah?
Yeah.
Then we just have to presume that Phil has no objection, so continuing on. I don't think he will.
That's what happens when you're not here.
He's on that committee.
I don't think they'll have any problem with that.
Next, negotiations.
Negotiations? We do or?
It's appointed, it's not here. It would only be put together if we have to either open the contract for some reason or do something out of your ordinary with the contract.
I was not part of your, absolutely not.
Not your work, yeah, all right.
I'll be on the waiting.
All right.
These are, this is for negotiations, right?
Yeah. Listen. Is Phil on for Conway?
Yes. But put Phil down again for Conway. If he doesn't show up.
This is lesson learned, right? Show up.
So who do we need?
Maybe for Sunderland, right? Did I do that? If you'd like to. Is someone, someone already on it?
I don't think I can.
Okay. Oh.
Oh, because that's.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay. Great, thanks.
You can pick them up, yeah, you could, but you just.
Because it's not on again.
Capital Improvement Committee. Um, one from each town. It's the, it's the bylaw committee, I guess you could say.
You want to go on for?
Yeah.
You're, Conway, right? Sure.
I'm ready for that.
Yeah, I really like Phil, he looks like spirit a little bit.
Hey, you want to save Phil from being.
I'll take your weight.
All right.
I'll do what you're telling me.
Okay. And Keith?
Reminder's meeting tomorrow night, six o'clock.
Oh, it's sex? Five on the camera. Really?
Yeah, five six.
Sex, all right.
George, you can't change the neck before, George.
I know that. Get a nice long dinner somewhere.
Exactly. Collaborative rep?
All right. First order with the fire. We had the first order with the fire. Fireworks. Capital.
Yes, you'll be the first. Well, actually, we're looking at the rest.
All right. The collaborative, well, that has traditionally been.
Then.
Yeah. Anybody have an interest in being a representative of the collaborative?
I'm the rep from Sunderland.
You are?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah. You don't necessarily have to take on every role, but.
I don't want.
Have you done that before? Have we had someone who's double reps?
I don't know. Not.
I can't see it being.
The important, the important thing is having information coming back to the committee of what's going on. There's not a ton of votes and stuff happening at the clavator outside of their projects and such, so.
But if he's there for.
If he's there for someone, he wants to do it, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. I get what you're saying, that you're, that you're there already for Sunderland, not that you are taking on Lit role, that you're already there. I got that.
That's true.
Say Q standard.
I have been the Mars.
I get two servings. Sorry.
No, that's okay. I've been the Mars representative, I don't mind continuing to do that. It's not a, part of the commitment. Unless anybody else wants to. I'll do it. Policy, one from each town. You want to stick with? Right. Plus we got, wait, Lee Deerfield.
What's this for?
Policy. And there is, there is, there is work this year. So it's been, do a little committee recently, but there is a lot of page to go through.
I don't know. I just have boys, so I don't have. I was on for, for Deerfield? Or maybe I was on.
Oh, yeah. So we need somebody for policy from Sunderland and Conway?
Put Phil down for Conway.
Don't jump.
Phil down for Conway. I mean, he hasn't done anything yet, I can take it.
All right.
But Phil's your problem. That's Jared Watson.
You didn't look at any of your bets.
No, it's not, it's not to Phil.
Yes, that might have been the impression I was getting. And there's a sick leave thing.
Sick leave bank, that's if, um, it's as need basis, if there's a staff member that wishes to. Access to sick leave bank, two members from the committee meet with two members from the association, decide if they qualify for the sick leave bank. So take the, take the decision making out of the people involved's hands or who work directly at the people's hands, and what's it there? So, um, it's happened once or twice a year, district wide, the last few years.
I'll be one of the members if you, if no one else wants to do it.
Yeah, I'll be the other.
Okay.
And they've been virtual, other ones have been, it's usually very.
All right. So now we need to approve the minutes from June 6th.
Last time.
June 6th? Got that one here.
So moved.
All right. All in favor?
Aight. You're gone again.
This has been a little steam.
Yeah.
We're going to do that and do that now while we're having.
Can you hear us now?
Yeah.
All right. All right, we're going to move things around a little bit to get our student council report.
Evan, you're up. Would you hear your report? Yep.
Okay, so student council is going well so far. We've had one meeting, um, uh, some updates. Next week is homecoming. Next week is homecoming week, um, and student council is organizing Spirit Week, a pep rally, and the high school homecoming dance, which will take place on Saturday, September 23rd from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. Um, we're selling tickets for $10. Um, a new peer mentoring program will be starting where high school students will learn dialogue skills to focus on school climate issues, as well as to facilitate dialogue circles in the middle school. Uh, sports and clubs are off to a good start. Um, we've had some cancellations due to weather, but overall going well. And yeah, students are doing good this year. Um, student council has a lot of cool stuff planned to make happen this year, and we are very enthusiastic to, yeah, um, to get all these things done and have fun with it.
Great, thank you, Evan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any may have questions, Evan?
Evan, what grade are you in?
I'm in 10th grade.
Thanks for the report.
Am I all set to go?
You're good.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Bye, have a good night.
It's a, hey, boss one.
No, no.
So yeah, just keep going.
No, that's fine, I just didn't know.
Oh, you want anyone?
I just. That's fine, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't anything negative, maybe your audience will. All right. Shelley, this is you, right?
That's me.
All right.
All right. Uh, 74 warrants were signed in July and August and early September. Uh, this is a significant number, but keep in mind it includes bills from the end of the year, from '23, as well as bills and payroll for the new year. Uh, so 74 warrants totaling $6,771. Oh, I said that wrong. I'm tired. Uh, I also sent you out the expense reports, and a couple of things to note on that quickly is, one, it's really early to even look at the numbers. We are still working out payroll accounts, so if you look at a lot of the teacher lines and the IA lines, they are in deficits. Some of that will flush itself out as payroll and I work to fix all of those pieces. There are some real overages though, um, and there's also some real savings that are going to get captured. For example, the athletic director line, if you recall, we have a new part-time athletic director and our stipend was increased for that, uh, because it was pulled out of the teacher contract, so that is a true overage if you look at that line. That's a $13,000 overage on that account. Uh, but there's savings. So the nurse leader position, if you also recall, last year we voted to, or you voted to move that from a full-time position to a part-time stipend position. So there's savings there. So a lot of these things are going to end up a wash at the end of the year, uh, but I did just want to give you some realistic examples. So I'm happy to take questions always, I just think it's premature if you have a question about something salary related, I'm certainly happy to look into it if you do have questions. Uh, so a couple of other things, I'll go as quickly as we can because I know we go a lot on the agenda. Scanlon Associates is here, not actually in the building, but working digitally and virtually with us to conduct last year's audit. So they go through all the books, uh, they create that wonderful report that we have come out and present last year, and then they prepare our excess inefficiency. At this point, I have no estimate on E and D because it's way too early in the process. We've been working with them for about seven days now, um, but I did want you to know that that started. Uh, an assessment update, I know Darius' superintendent report has some more information on SOA funding, uh, but what that does to impact frontier is that we received additional money. $14,640 additional we received because they increased the per pupil from $30 per pupil to $60 per pupil. So that means that our assessments have to be reduced because when we build the budget, it's based on the preliminary number, um, so I gave you those numbers in the report. It's not a significant amount of money, but our towns are always grateful for whatever helps. A little bit of an investment update for you. So we talked, I think it was in May, about transferring money from interest earnings to the OPEB account. Uh, you voted to, actually, they're going to modify that vote because the minutes were wrong, um, that's on the agenda coming up, but what was discussed in the meeting and voted on was that all interest earned in fiscal year '23 would be transferred to the OPEB fund. That transfer was $57,699.46. Those are pretty significant interest earnings for us, so we're happy to make that a contribution in there. And then we'll continue to earn 2.1% on our money market account. So we can have that conversation again in the spring about what we want to do with those funds, because it is additional revenue for us. Uh, additionally.
Did I read about the CD, the 5, was that the title, the 5.?
No, the CD is, that's something brand new that we're doing. So the money market account is our, um, just our checking savings account that we operate from. So the treasurer, uh, I know most of you met Mike at that meeting where we talked about OPEB last year, he is going to be opening a CD, uh, for October, and with his savings making right now for nine months, they're offering 5.12% interest. So we're going to take, um, the, I don't want to get too in the leads, but, you know, we have the bond anticipation note for all the capital projects. That renews every year right now, and it sits in our bank account until next July, when we renew the note or start transferring it to principal plus interest payments. So that money is just sitting there. So we're going to pluck that and put it in this CD, which is about $1 million, and have it earn that 5.12%. And then we can have another conversation about what to do with that. Um, preliminarily, I'm thinking we use that money and transfer it into capital stabilization fund, which we established last year, but currently has no money in it, but that's a conversation that we can have in the spring. So between those two pieces, we're going to probably be looking at, at a minimum of $50,000, probably $75,000 to $100,000, depending on, um, how the money market account pans out. So I think this is a good move. If we have the opportunity to take advantage of it, it's a good thing for us to do. Uh, capital is also on the agenda later, but I did give you the figures so that you could see where we're at with the financials of the three, three big capital projects. The tennis courts, I'm sure you all saw in the parking lot out there, they're close to done, we're getting there. Uh, same thing with the boiler, we're, what, like 98% or so finished, just working out some final tweaks. Those funds are almost fully spent, uh, there might be a little bit of money left that we throw back in school choice because that was part of the funding for those, um, but we did have adequate money, so that's great news because we're estimating projects out here in advance and it's hard to know what's going to happen. And the roof, there's not been a whole lot spent on it to date, $45,000 of the 505 that we allocated, 505,000, uh, because we are going to discuss this at the Capitol Day tomorrow night as to next steps, and then we'll have to decide on borrowing another 400,000, which you all have already voted to do, we'll just move forward that, with that process. And then I gave you revolving fund update, I'm not going to go over all those numbers. I think it's self-explanatory that our revolving funds are in good shape. Um, one thing to comment on that came up in another meeting that might be of interest to others is the school lunch balance. This is, is much higher right now than it has ever been in the history of any school lunch program, I think. Um, and that is because, if you remember when COVID first hit, we received extra funding and we were supplementing salaries and wages paid normally from the revolving fund, we were using grant money so that we could save, because we had no idea what school lunch was going to look like when we came back into the building with everyone being free. Um, so if you look at the projected revenue and expenses, it's almost a wash, but we do have the savings, which is a perfect time for us to start looking at what other major things need to be replaced in the kitchen or updates, you know, so we're having those conversations. But I feel like right now, we're in good shape, way too early to even talk about anything scared with the budget, but otherwise, all of our revenue looks to be in good position. Sound good so far?
You. Somebody comment? That's good. No? All right. Allison, do you have a comment?
I just wanted to introduce myself to the people who don't know me. My name's Allison Walters, I'm the president of the Frontier Education Association, we've got a new name. Um, and I just wanted to say hello and, and glad to be back for a new year. And I'm, I'm here or one of the executive board members will be at all of the school committee meetings.
George, I think you're next.
Okay, uh, so, um, I want to start off by just letting everybody know some of our new staff members that we brought on this year. Uh, we've got two long-term subs, uh, one for our speech and language pathologist, it's Gabby Farina. Uh, she's filling in for Rima Mills, who's going to be coming back in January. Uh, we've got Lindsay Bazana was coming, uh, was our OTR occupational therapist, and she's filling in for Casey Gavitt, uh, who's coming back, I think in November. Uh, other than that, we've hired three, um, full-time teachers, uh, Reyna Kiddlesbrough, uh, who's a high school chemistry teacher, uh, Amanda Sharon for high school math, and Stephanie Stokes also for high school math. Um, and we have hired, um, we've hired approximately six IAs, and if you're out there, we're still looking for one more instructional assistant, if anybody's interested, if you're out there, can be a show. Um, professional development's update, so we're starting early release, um, Fridays, this Friday, we're going to be starting, we've got the next two sessions with our staff are going to be about microaggressions. Uh, thereafter, we're going to, we're going to have two sessions, we've got a professor coming from UMass to speak about AI. Uh, this is something that I know a number of our teachers have been, uh, they've got a lot of questions about it, um, and, uh, so we're looking forward to, to those discussions with, um, with, during those meetings, uh, and then we're going to be doing more sort of practices again as well, uh, in addition to our typical, our usual departmental work is also. I want to just sort of piggyback on what Evan was saying about the, um, the peer mentoring. So, uh, we've got, uh, she spoke to the, to the fact that high school students are going to be, um, training to facilitate the middle school. I just want to, uh, point out that Scott Dredge, Grant Byalek, uh, are working to do the training with high school students. Uh, they've already had, I want to say, two sessions or one session? One session. Um, but, uh, this is something that we did prior to COVID, um, and we were, we were in a really good, um, space with it. Um, COVID obviously, uh, made things sort of go on hold for a little bit, um, but we're really glad to get back to doing this and sort of encompassing the entire school with it. And then I sent you all a guidance report, uh, which they release every year, which basically details, uh, the schools that, um, our, our graduating class applied to, uh, where they were accepted and where they were attending. Uh, then there's also, I think, really interesting information that I, I can send it to if you're interested, but I, I like looking at, there's a, there's, um, they kept track of graduates beginning in 1970 and the, the rate of four-year college attendance, uh, between 1970 and 2023. 1970, so the four-year college attendance rate at Frontier was 36%, uh, and currently it's at 62%. Um, so obviously times have changed quite a bit. Um, overall, our students that are, we've got a number of students who are going to four-year colleges, um, we've got 62% who are attending four-year college, 14% are off to two-year college, uh, 1% goes into vocational tech training, 5% of our past, uh, 2023 graduating class went into the military, uh, 16% entered the labor market, and 2% were undecided. So, um, if you want further information, um, I can, I'm more than happy to share info with you in guidance. So that's my report. So how do you have any questions?
Curious, you don't have to get into, but what that compares to the general population in 1970 going. All right.
I doubt it, don't, I don't, but it would be.
It would be interesting, that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do you have that data for Frontier over the last five years, 10 years, did it look like that progression?
In terms of?
Just those percent, so sort of four-year, two-year, so we can rate you, we can see
Yep.
the last five.
Yes. Yeah, because the guidance, the guidance release was this every year.
Any other questions for George? All right. So this is, I think next we've got to vote to approve the amended minutes with the new memo.
Yeah, so the minutes missed the vote, but I went back and watched the recording and the vote did happen. So it was, this is in regards to the OPEB account, what was recorded in the minutes said there was a collective nod of support for the 70/30 split, which was changing our stock investment, just to remind you about that. And then I think it also said, um, as presented in regards to the interest transfer. So we just. So we just wanted to change the language so that it says, "On a motion from Melissa Novak, second invited alone, approve the general fund transfer interest earned in FY23 to the OPEB account."
So was, there were two, so there were two distinct events? Because I remember that nod.
So one, we didn't have to vote on officially, and one we did. And it happened verbally, it just didn't make it into.
So we're teasing these two apart.
Right. I feel like there's less discussion in there.
There was. We should have to have it on record because the accountant's gonna look to see, why did you do this transfer?
I think it's true, but I guess. Circle.
Thank you.
All in favor of amended the credits?
It was actually hard to decipher the video even because we were giggling or something. Why does that always happen?
All right, let's go to the capital update.
I'm gonna give a capital update.
All right.
All right, so. All right, so I shared with this in, whoop. Wrong way, don't look at all the pictures, close your eyes. Just to get an idea of the magnitude, the amount of projects that we've been doing the last, you know, this year and even the last couple of years, which has been a tremendous amount of work for this committee. And, you know, from central office staff and institutional staff. Frontier new boilers, we said they were 95% there. Tennis courts, they've since been fencing up. It's still gotta be a couple more weeks and then we can, we'll be painting them and opening them up. We painted the lower part of the gym, pretty nervous about it. But that gray on the bottom there, it goes all the way around, but it was really getting beat up. And so, Jared, what does that look like? So like.
I'm not nervous about it.
I was nervous that like, wait, was they able to paint the bottom half gray? I'm like, oh, that looks, you know, it's gonna look like we cut a corner because we didn't, you know, to paint the whole gym, you're talking.
Who painted the color?
Exactly.
Who painted the color?
I don't know, they did a good job.
You get stuck in things like.
I do, I went to you twice, like, you gotta walk down and check this out. Well, it's a showcase room in our building, right?
A shout out to Frank.
And Frank, Frank is still in, works here, he's a paper man, he's a paper man, he did a great job. And, and been inside the boys locker room. That's what it looks like if you hold their nose. But we repainted the floor, and that's before all the stain get in there. And right now, they are under construction. They're replacing the top part of the press box, it's reached a really bad thing. And it's going to probably be completed, I believe they said this weekend, barring how much they can get done tomorrow on the rain. So that's good. Kind of fire through these other ones, just so I want people to know what's going on. Peer elementary did some bushwork out front. They installed 11 AC in 11 rooms, and we only paid for five. That's that rebate kind of thing that we had in place, which is great. Unbelievably, it didn't work the last week because of the power still has to be looked up. So we're bragging about it, but the hottest week of the year, they did get AC. They got a new dishwasher. Gym floor is redone, well, refinished, refinished. They got new shed, store stuff in. Sunderland, they got AC in the library. And they had to repair some of their floor entryways. Right now, the oil tank replacement is a, it's a big project, so $100,000 is out the bid. They had new system to replace. They painted the whole interior of the school, they've been there, they did a wonderful job, it looks beautiful. Waitley, they replaced the floor, gave me some of those tile floors that are very difficult to clean with the new, new surface. They put a new sidewalk, they got through a grant, a safety schools grant. Reacted down some trees, got struck by lightning, it's gonna happen in a few months. They painted their library too, got new, ended their cafeteria, got new cafeteria tables. Kyle, we got a new generator. AC, two classrooms there, two classrooms left before they're complete up there. They got a new range, which is an absolute horror show because we're still having problems with it. We won't get into it. They had new stage curtain, that was a primitive town meeting. They had new flooring, they're doing the flooring through several rooms every year. That's the office and classrooms. And they got a storage container, we did too here at Frontier, and I didn't get a picture of that. But there's the benefit, they got a new restroom partitions that were gross. As you can see, they're probably gonna have to do the floor soon. And that is, in pictures, what we got. I thought you might want to see it that way instead of. The capital committee is meeting next, is tomorrow. You know, to talk about the roof, to talk about the letter. It's not on the agenda for tomorrow night, but we're gonna start putting together what we're doing at Frontier. You should have all received the letter today that came, came to me like a big day. I sent it, I had Jen send it along, but the fire chief, she sways, he really wants us to consider prioritizing our fire alarm panel, we've had a lot of problems with it. It is very expensive, this is proprietary system, and the whole thing has to be replaced. We're also gonna be talking about energy management systems that are very expensive. So while we knocked off some great things, but we got new boilers who are running on an energy management system that is running on Apple's, not an Apple II, Windows.
Oh, yeah.
What is it, Windows XP? XP, so it's running on Windows XP. We actually have to go find computers to run the program because it can't run on any of the other computers. So it's about, and we're probably talking with, just in general reviews of ideas that are going on, we're probably gonna be talking with the energy commission in town to maybe make it some grant work because we do save a lot of money if we can own our heating and AC news through management that way. So a lot of different things are coming there, but I'll do a report after, you know, we need. Tomorrow's meeting is really talking about the roof. We have another solution for the roof that we're gonna discuss that may be a bit cheaper, be a bit easier. And then we'll probably have another meeting to go through other capital. But it'll be another busy capital year on its way.
Can I ask something about the roof?
Yep.
Sunderland's not far away from one either. Did you discuss or look at solar panels or solar shingles or ways to use the two for one? You're gonna put a new roof on one, you go over solar shingles and try and get.
Right, so right now, we're a flat, we're a flat roof with, what do you call it, a?
Membrane?
A membrane, but so, and right now, the committee's looking at doing it in stages because we don't have the money to do it all once. Do it all once would probably be over $4 million, be it a market adjustment, maybe even higher. So we're looking at the most hot spot rooms where we have the most leaks right now, which is the mainframe here and then over the boys locker room down there, and then over the bedroom. It's kind of three little smaller sections. We are looking at, I've had conversations when I met with Natalie Blay and Joe Comacord about, you know, more incentives to putting solar on in these school buildings because it would make complete sense. So the idea is there, right now, we don't have any funding toward that. So it's very different. Ideally, when you look at Frontier, you think about solar over the metal area of the library, but that is such a mess above us that we can't touch it without probably redoing it. So we'd have to probably put a million into redoing it before we can get the solar panels on it. So there's conversation, but it's not fitting neatly into our plans right now. Any else on? That's all I got.
All right. We've got updates in the student handbook.
So we have Scott Dredge with us. Somebody you haven't seen in a while, still hasn't grown here?
Still, it's only, I got. So having sat around, I put a nice little concise summary of what I spent my summer working on. As many of you know, or your new year students, that's my role every year as I get to change, update the student handbook according to changes that are made at the state level or changes that need to be made based on the current climate and culture of the building. So I have here for you page numbers of where you can find what we added and changed. I'll just read it and summarize for you what we've done. Last school year, last November, there was legislation passed at the state level that kind of snuck in and surprised all of us in the school systems regarding disciplinary regulations. And so it was really kind of more of a due process legislation to hold schools more accountable, to show that schools are making best efforts to find supportive measures or alternative measures to discipline. And so language to that was added into our discipline section, page 24 of our handbook. Really, like I said, it's a due process measure. So I'll leave it at that. Page 40 and 41, I updated language to include certain technological devices like smart watches and earbuds and things like that to our cell phone user policy. Many kids we're finding are using their Apple watches the same way they would use a cell phone. So we just wanted to clean that up. Like I said, that's an adjustment for, you know, what we see happen throughout the school year. And just make those adjustments there. More importantly, for the middle school, I was asked, we had submissions take place last year regarding social media, we started a school day, kids were taking their phones, using them even though they're not supposed to have them. So I had the language to the cell phone policy to the middle school that if the cell phone is confiscated during the school day here, a parent or caregiver needs to come get the phone. So actually, the first one today, and it went well. The parent was very cooperative and understanding. Page 42, included procedures to our existing gender identity policy, which really was for a method of changing a student's name within the school setting. Piggybacking off that, we added, so we met the summer nights department and added protocols to have it do that. So really what that means is, you know, when a student wants to, you know, have that happen, we have a form that stays with guidance when it goes to IT because there's a lot that happens with that, they want their name to be changed in terms of their email address, things like that. So we have that in place that allows us to have an internal document go back and forth between IT and guidance to make sure that we're supporting the student properly. And I of course added language to the handbook about artificial intelligence. You know, there's, we're gonna get some PD on this, I know some teachers are worried. A big topic discussion. You know, in our PD, we're gonna look for ways to support used AI intelligence in the classroom. But we also still need to include language in the student handbook for using AI for plagiarism. So I just submitted some language into that that will fall into our plagiarism guidelines, just really just add AI to it, so. And finally, updated language in our dress code section to clarify the balance between free speech and disruption of disorder or the infringement of rights of others, including gender non-conforming students so the school can ensure a safe and secure learning environment. Really, that comes to striking a balance for the school. Yes, and making sure students are educated about their, their rights to free speech, but also if they're wearing a shirt that urges upon the rights of others, that, that is, that is not technically free speech. And the school can and will enforce a dress code to that.
Yes. In the past, we've got copies of the handbook, is that possible?
It's all online.
Oh, it's all online, okay.
I'm not a big computer guy, so I know. I've just, I've just.
Another use for your MacBook.
Thank you. So the other thing is, is this a lot of changes for this year versus other years?
That's the most I've ever done. It's been a busy year, but a lot happened. So yes, the handbook is completely digital now. We did away with purchasing physical handbooks. It got really too costly for the school, and we found that even, even the middle school wasn't using them anymore. So that would be saving a little money that way. Just posting to the school website. At student orientation, I notify all students where it can be found and have them sign off that they acknowledge that I told them where it is, so they know how to access that.
So like, same similar question, so if they sign off that they know where it is. So returning students, do they also sign off on the updates? Like, how do they know these updates happen?
So we don't go through every update. I, what I share with the kids during every orientation is, there's updates due every year. It's for you to use like a, like a, as a resource, a dictionary, a encyclopedia, not for you to learn about every year. It's there for you to access if you have questions.
But like, will this page be like, okay, here are the updates, everyone coming back?
You know, I just embed it all in and that's that.
It want to be important for the students to know that some of these are significant updates, right?
They are, but like I said, if, if, if they really need to ask, they can always ask. And a lot of times when kids have questions, they'll go to their guidance counselor or need even, they can have a discussion.
I would guess that the AI plagiarism is probably being taught in English and history classes.
Yeah.
You know, it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's definitely been a topic of discussion at, at least at high school humanities classes, for sure.
Allison's shaking her head.
I don't want to open a can of worms asking you about this, but I am curious if there's been any thought or discussion about those little packets for putting phones in, those little long pouches for electronics. I know it's an extensive.
We've, we've watched and, you know, heard the news about other schools trying them.
Yeah, there's a lot.
I think the jury's still out about how effective they are. Some schools manage them well, some don't. You know, we have, like you see behind you, you get those sleeves. Some teachers use those, they put them in, have the students put them in, they walk in the high school classroom. So far this year, I've heard from the teachers that our new policy, which they were definitely remain aware of very rotation for the middle school, has been working very well. It was a good year to do it because I actually started this last year in the spring due to some significant events that took place in the middle schools and social media. So our current eighth graders, who were seventh graders at the time, were fully aware of how, how that went. But back to your question is, we've never really felt that it needed to be a process here because we also have some teachers that have the kids use them, especially in our technology media classes. So there's a balance, we're, we're working to strike a balance here. Really, it comes down to our teachers having those relationships with the kids in the classroom and management practices, whether they allow it or not. Yes, we have some bumpy titles, but I wouldn't say it's a major school climate issue at this point.
So I think unless anybody else has any questions, we've got a vote on waiving the policy for two readings.
So obviously, timely, we've already launched this handbook. You know, I guess normally, you would be doing something like this in, you know, August. But you have a double reading of any policy, and it basically, a handbook is an extension of your policy. So you need to weigh your double readings to go all agree that you're not gonna do a double reading of this policy, then you're gonna vote it tonight. You can do that.
I got one more question. About the last one about clarifying the language of free speech and the trouble. Like, there was a really significant situation in the middle borough.
That is the case, I studied thoroughly.
How did that play out?
Well, and so what I did was, to be honest with you, is I took language from their student handbook, studied that versus what the ruling was at the, at the mass, or what, what the preliminary ruling was at the mass spirit quarter.
What was it, right, I don't know.
So they basically said that the, the school, you know, and it was easy for them to funding more to quarterback, but the, the school kind of overextended their, their reach. And they had hoped that they would, that that would start as a discussion about why language on that Hilster's T-shirt infringed department rights of a protected class rather than just set a goal, you know? So the language in their handbook, no one had a problem with it. It was just challenged. So I just wanted to get ahead of it, saying to myself, like, hey, this is, this is probably gonna happen at some point in our lives. So I took some language from there, looked at the ruling, what the specific language was about, how, how to support both sides. And really, you know, my approach would always be like. And really, you know, my approach would always be like, to start with a discussion with the student and the family about why, why this might hurt someone. It's good to go, to go from there. Cause that does support our restored practices anyways, rather than just sending a kid on.
Yeah. Now we've got a.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
All right, I'm in favor of waiving the two reading policy for this.
Aye.
It's like putting air in a tire of your car, like that's a fix, I just put air in it every other day, you know, it's like a breathing tire.
So I wanna clarify, and I don't know, I just got this when I printed this out, what was included in the packet for everybody has Conway on here?
Got the label Conway, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
I was supposed to check that.
Yeah, that's okay. So you've got a resolution to lend artists support to help to fund rural, rural aid to school bill to help to encourage. The legislators should move forward on that. And what's in the packet has Conway listed in there, this would get updated to bring frontier to the school district. It's the only change in the wording here.
We just haven't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we talked about this a little bit before the summer, there's a bill going here to help to right a bit of the disconnect between what happens in big cities and what happens out of rural districts and help to recognize the fact that it costs more for education up here than it is. And at this point, the equation doesn't support that. So this would help to bring us closer anyway. If you haven't gotten, gone to it, check out the link on ruralschoolsinaid.org, which has lots of information if you wanna familiarize with this. Tonight, we're looking to pass this resolution to help to send this, this legislation along as things move a little slower out there.
Awesome.
I'll make a motion.
Accepted.
I go with that too. What, does, does a document exist for frontier? Cause I'm looking where as education now, now for fifty-eight percent of the Conway town budget.
I would say has.
Like what, yeah, what, what are we, what are we gonna say there?
Oh.
Right, I will, I will.
You've got more than just.
Right, I will, I will have it updated for, with our information, you know, I think you can go ahead and vote it, cause the idea is that you want to pass on to the state legislator that this, that this is important.
Jessica, you can just amend this by striking that paragraph, I, Gary's taking the ball, I, I have this and I did it wrong.
And on a side note, to throw a compliment back to you, Jessica, Jessica's been working hard, she's.
Very hard.
Very hard pushing this forward, attending meetings, because right now, you know, rural schooling is great, but in order for us to get rural schooling, we have to get non-rural schools, state legislator people to be voting this. So we have to advocate for ourselves, and so part of this advocacy, to go for that full goal of the sixty million and all the transportation, all the other kind of things that are affected to it, still with Jessica at the last man's end. And it's part of that, so this is, and kind of, some folks here are like, well, it's a no brainer, of course we want to really like this, we'll just for, but we really do need to continue to advocate for ourselves because if we don't get a hear of more suburban and urban representatives, we're not gonna be able to get what we need.
It's like this double edged, we have a smaller portion, and so nobody's thinking about the equation and how it impacts us, but also when we say, hey, look at us out here, it's only a few people out there waving their hands, and so would we need the support of the rest of the folks.
Are there any other regional schools in the Western Mass applying for this?
So we're not applying for this, this is legislation that's, we're asking to help to move forward at this point. I was in a committee, so correct? Jessica?
We're trying to get a hearing with the joint committee on education. Yes.
Then we have a committee, subcommittee right now, Missy, Jess, and I are on it, and we've been reaching out, Missy, Jessica's been the most to reach, we're reaching out to all the school committees of the whole state and all the select board of the whole state. As you can imagine, Easterners haven't been so quick to reply or to sign on, but we're trying to restrict the hill schools, you know, we're trying to do our best to get rural schools signed on and spread it out.
And at this point, how many, I didn't check it today, to see how many folks have signed on?
Two thousand and twenty-five. If I can get permission from Mary Keith and David to add their games, we'll be at like one thirty-nine.
All right. Mary Keith and David.
It's possible I just missed it when I missed this.
You brought this up last.
I did, yeah.
Right, and you gave us a website you go to?
Yep. Yeah.
I swear I did that.
All right.
It's, no, I, I will have.
All right. Yeah.
And that's, that's what we're asking the other committees, like if you're at an open meeting and you say, this is a, I'm gonna just write their name and then all those names at the committee go, Jessica, so that's what we're asking, you know, the rest of the state. So if you do, and the website's a little conversant, we can get in there.
I remember going to the website, I can't remember.
It's easier to say I didn't do it.
Yeah, I thought that I did.
So we think we can strike the entire last three whereas statements and strike the Conway Elementary School District.
I always does the local Conway, it has one for frontier.
So maybe the wrong one.
Didn't say frontier anywhere on that.
It says frontier nowhere on it.
Okay, there is one that says frontier then.
No, I, I don't know.
We did this over a month ago.
Yeah, I know, but, you know, I'm not gonna find it really.
I think, I don't know.
But I'm just.
If the intention is that we want it switched to a little smaller, if there's no, you know, I mean, if it says fifty-eight percent, yeah, that's different, but all the other intentions are, we just would switch it to frontier or on.
Right.
It doesn't seem like we can't vote.
You vote to, you could amend the vote to approve this and ask the superintendent to make the adjustments necessary to show the frontier information. And that would be, you're voting, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't change the content of, you know, we didn't ask for, you know, you have that kind of, so I think if you say voting it, voting it, who to vote it with, changes being the document who represents frontier.
So just for clarification purposes, I think the initial step has to be to vote for the amendments that you'll put in about frontier in here with the appropriate information, and then the next step would be to vote, that's that resolution.
I'm saying here.
Or we can just do.
Just kind of like, kind of like, I think if you do it all in, well, so like you say, I, you know, you'll, you'll say, we vote the minutes as amended, you're saying, where the resolution has, will be, as amended by the.
I have it here, I could read it out loud into the record.
And send a copy to Chris so he knows.
You just say, you just say copy to Chris and everybody wills.
Yeah?
Or you go ahead and read it, it'll be fine.
Right. All of solid messages. Whereas rural school districts in Massachusetts face daunting threats to their financial sustainability and thus to their ability to provide rural students with the same quality of educational opportunity enjoyed by students that are present in the state. Whereas the Commonwealth has rightly touted a significant increase in education funding following the 2019 Student Opportunity Act, however, the most needy rural and declining enrollment districts have received less than one percent of that increase in funding. Whereas no less than four recent state and legislative commissions have reviewed the looming crisis facing rural schools and concluded that rural school districts are seriously under-resourced and underfunded. Whereas the most reasons of these commissions was specifically created by the SOA, quote, "to study and make recommendations concerning the long-term fiscal health of rural school districts that are facing or may face declining student enrollment, including recommendations for, among other things, expanding the rural school aid grant program and establishing and including a low and declining student enrollment factor within the foundation budget." Whereas in its final report issued in the December 2022, the Commission on the Fiscal Health of Rural School District concluded that districts with very low student enrollment cost sixteen point seven percent more to operate than state average, and that small K-12 regional school districts cost twenty-two point seven percent more to operate than larger ones per pupil. Whereas the Frontier Regional School District is such a limited enrollment rural district. Whereas Frontier has received virtually no increase in Chapter Seventy-eight for years, while the district's fixed costs, which do not decline in tandem with student enrollment, have pushed the district's operating budgets up substantially over that period. Whereas the towns of Conway, Deerfield, Underland, and Whately, with a combined population of approximately twelve thousand three hundred, have very limited ability to raise property taxes or other revenues and yet are left to carry the burden of increasing the education costs. Therefore, be it resolved, that the Frontier Regional School Committee urges the Massachusetts Legislature's Joint Education Subcommittee to schedule a prompt hearing for H three five six seven and its companion bill S two three eight eight, and ultimately to recommend passage by both chambers of the Massachusetts General Court. Both bills would fulfill the commitment of the SOA to address the chronic underfunding of rural declining enrollment schools by requiring an annual appropriation of sixteen million dollars for rural school aid and implementing the full range of well-documented recommendations deemed in the report of the Commission on the Fiscal Health of Rural School Districts. Written by Martha Barber, who is a lawyer and the chair of the Mohawk Regional School Committee.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
So is a motion to.
So we're gonna have two votes or just one?
No, just one on that.
Yeah.
That's it.
So let's, can we have the, this is how I'm gonna write the motion up. So on a motion of whoever's gonna do it, the resolution from the rural aid school that's outlined in the attached document titled, and I'll tag it wherever that title is, has provided the supporting documents, so that's what we're, that's what we're gonna put on.
Yep.
So moved.
Second?
I'm in favor.
Aye.
All right. We're gonna need a vote on the superintendency group agreement.
It is not ready.
And Jessica.
So we met last week, like, you know, put on the agenda, cause we were together last week, hopefully we can get there. Had me with the attorney yesterday to go, again, go through some of the same kind of things, talk about percentage and stuff, so we're gonna fine tune it, hopefully have to use it.
Right. And any other reports from committee chairs? I don't think there's been anything from the collaborative, but I meet in the twenty-seventh, that's all. All right. There is.
I'll report, so you received it, but I still wanna highlight some things on it. Make sure you have your calendar marked for a joint meeting on the twenty-eighth at six PM, so we'll have IT here, so we won't have this problem. But in, you know, it'd be a great time to have a conversation regarding, you know, what we presented, but please bring questions and stuff, I think we, talking to another member today, having a conversation around the document, kind of bring it, will help bring into life, if you have concerns or that kind of stuff, remember, we did invest a lot of money into this and, and resources, and we wanna make sure that we're clear, we worry, if we have concerns or that kind of stuff. So Jim will be here on site, and as I said, the email, sent out to families on Monday, we're also doing staff meetings during the day, administrative meetings start today, then have staff meetings and stuff as well, so we can get more and more input to help build our plan at that point, so. He said, Shelley said it, you know, he didn't say that pre-run for all was done permanently, so they'd have to actually pass a new bill to change that. So, you know, we can, we don't have to guess, you're moving forward. I did a little summary of the rural aid, we did increase that to fifteen million, you can see what, you know, frontier received, and the change there from eighty-eight thousand to two hundred thirteen thousand. These numbers are often estimated from one of our, I believe from either MASS or Mars, I forget which, from one of our associations does business projections, so it's gonna be around that, don't, even though I didn't think the exact number, it was the exact number that they gave us. So that's great, we're gonna have to have conversations this year about, when we get into budget season, is, is rural aid real? I hate to say put it that way, but if we can't depend on the following year, we can't be offsetting our budgets by, so how much, much like we do with transportation, you know, we never know what the state's going to give us for reimbursement on transportation, so we do a little guessing game based on whatever, Shelley's usually conservative cause you don't wanna be wrong. So we'll be having those conversations about that, so while the rural aid looks like a, a good chunk of money, the reality kind of sets in, when you look at your Chapter Seventy, which is the next thing on the, on the report that I gave you, where frontier got a total increase from Chapter Seventy money of twenty-nine thousand two hundred eighty dollars. And so that sounds like a lot to you at home, but we went up in wages alone last year of two hundred and thirty thousand. So it's just in a normal growth year, like there was no crazy teacher contract kind of thing, it was just a normal cola growth year, and we were over three hundred thousand overall, so as Jessica just said earlier, in what she said, when she read it out loud, we continue to take on more, from, you know, and the state's not picking up its share, and it keeps getting less and less each year. So again, conversations that we're gonna have, so just trying to talk more and more about it so that when we get to budget season, especially those who are new to this, give a bit, more of a general idea of what, why it's important. There is legislation, and they are talking about whether or not they're gonna do something for whole harmless schools. So we're a whole harmless school because our enrollment is not going up, and so that means we only get, you know, whole harmless categories, we get the per student minimum. And so sixty dollars per kid is not gonna do it as we just see these numbers here. So there is conversation and legislation, and we're probably gonna have to do some advocacy on that. SOA, Student Opportunity Act, is Chapter Seventy money. It was very confusing early on, it sounded like it was this new money, but they were just putting more money into Chapter Seventy, and to its, you know, to its credit, it's going to a lot of students, it's just a lot of the students in Massachusetts are in like ten districts, and there's over, I forget the number, cause you remember the number, total number of students, so it's like a hundred, let's say it's a hundred nineteen, but I'm pulling it out of the air, that are not getting any additional money through SOA. So there's a lot of districts out there that are affected, you know, by this, so they are gonna be looking to do some changes, and we're gonna advocate for it.
With all those questions and discussions and legislation, is there, they raised the possibility of changing the ratio of charter tuition and school choice tuition?
So I don't think they're gonna touch school choice, you know what I mean, or they're gonna, if they, it'll be melted in, it won't be a standalone kind of thing. You know, school choice, maybe they will, I don't know, it, it affects people differently. We're obviously a winner in school choice in this area, and I'm sure some of the other regional schools would love to see it, see that change. The same kind of thing's happening on the Cape, where they have some winners and some losers with school choice, so I'd be curious of how they adjust that. So they could, it's in the, it's in the rural schools report about addressing how those funding formulas are doing. I think, I mean, I don't, actually, I don't know enough about the, but they are looking about trying to change so that you do receive more money, so we'll see how they shift things around politically. Also from our advocacy groups of Mars, see with Mars, the budget, she does a great job of kind of letting us know where things are trending, and, you know, if you're following the tax collections in the state, if you read the, those pages in the paper, tax revenues are down, so which means we're gonna probably go into a tighter year, which again makes you wonder where are they going to reduce? Are they gonna reduce transportation, are they gonna reduce rural aid, are they gonna reduce, so we're gonna keep an eye on that, but it also, Frontier's in good shape financially, but I'm saying a lot of some of our smaller schools who are in tougher shape, we're already like being careful about how we use reserve funds day one, where it's like, you know, let's not just throw that at school choice, cause we may have to use that to offset next year's budget to level fund our programs. So I'm just putting it out there that that information got. to level fund our programs. So I'm just putting it out there that that information is out there. And after saying with all the money problems, it is a superintendent's contract season. I'm only saying that out loud because it's going to, we're hoping to be able to get the new superintendency agreement, group agreement thing in place so that maybe we can try it out. Hopefully, it's not going to be a contentious superintendent contract here. It's weird me talking about it this way. But you folks have to let me know by, where the superintendent presents it, by January, by the end of January, you're going to renew my contract. But it's going to take, you guys have a joint meeting to make that vote, which means you got to put that on the calendar. And then you got to meet, negotiate, and then you got to come back and vote the contract as a joint meeting. So it's a couple of meetings that have to happen. Technically, the contract could be done after January, but you have to notify me your intentions to renew before January, before the end of January. So, you know, we're probably looking at November or something like that to have these meetings. I have a general idea how to do it. But if we can also get the superintendency group agreement and kind of follow that, so kind of work out some of the kinks of that, about how we make decisions as five committees coming together in governance of the superintendent. So just putting it out there on people's radar because it's a, managing me is a big portion of your job.
Can I go back to one thing about the budget, being the dumb new guy? You know, here's something that the state's education budget was passed after we had already done our budget and there was extra money allocated by the state and we're putting that into the choice fund. Is it, is that correctional or did I dream this up? Isn't there?
Well, so, so we, we, so there's different, we have different revenue sources that come from the state. But through Chapter Seventy, we budgeted thirty dollars per student. Okay, because that was one of the things on the table. It came out with sixty. And so that difference, we're getting back to the towns because their assessments will change, will be less because the state's giving us more money.
It's not a lot of money.
It's not a lot. It's two thousand bucks for, you know, it's what, fourteen thousand total or something of that sort. So that is something that's changing. Obviously, we didn't know how much rural aid we were going to use. So we're going to have to decide how we're going to use that this year. You know, so, you know, yeah, there are those different kinds of things that we didn't know during budget season.
Is when we push that in next year, is that an excess or a safety net or?
No, it has to be, it has to be returned to the towns this year directly because we've overassessed them at this point. So we issue them a credit and they pay less.
But it's a good question regarding the rural aid, do we use it this year? So what we will do is we will use the rural aid because we have to use that by the end of the school year. You can't save that. And perhaps something that we're paying, we're paying a salary on choice, we'll save that choice so that we can then apply that to the following year. You know, I mean, something that we'll try to push problems off through the next year. It's kind of the game we kind of play is that save money, help reduce next year's budget by using money that we have to use in this fiscal year to aid this year's budget. Even if it doesn't need aid, we aid the next year's budget. So, yeah, but as Shelley said, frontier's in good financial, she'll help right now.
We are. We just have to be careful using a funding source that's not consistent year to year. We don't want to, and we were fortunate that we didn't have to use ESSR in that way. Some districts are having to do major cuts because ESSR money is going to be gone and they have to fund positions.
You are going to see neighboring districts have massive cuts this year because they used ESSR. They had to. In some cases, they had to. You know what I mean? In some cases, it was the, let's use the money we have and they put positions on it. Now those positions have to come off and they have to make the choice if they're going to continue to fund them. So it's, and I'm not in the room of those districts. It's not how you want to do it. But sometimes they were forced to because they had no other choice based on, you know, we were in better financial shape and we did some smart moves during COVID to save money using different ways of ESSR and, you know, revolving accounts, you know, buying out, not buying out, but funding those, so we weren't getting deficits there. So we didn't have to use. We did a lot of smart things. It's all show.
I think that we have to be careful with rural aid as well, not just salaries and wages. But at this point, although this is a significant amount of money compared to what we've received, we sort of use it as the emergency fund. We hold on to it and wait and see if something comes up that we can't pay for. And then use it primarily right now to fund these other projects, like the C container that we did purchase was like five thousand dollars. You know, the top of the press box. Those are things that we're not putting on capital lists to try to have our towns fund. And it's, it's things that we need. So, you know, we have to talk about how to spend it once we know what the final money number is. But there's lots of little things that we do behind the scenes with some of those additional grant funds.
Great. I would imagine administration's going to find ways to bend it correctly.
Well, we're going to work with the Capitol Committee too. I don't think we've done enough, I don't think we've done enough bank for a buck how we use, how much we saved school choice during COVID and then took a major capital expense off the town by replacing the boilers. That were half a million dollars. If they even reached the town meeting floor, you know, unless we brought it up, they didn't even know that we, that we saved and then we spent. We saved that money. If we didn't do it that way, we spent it in other ways, that would have been, you know, divided to four towns, half a million dollars. You kind of guess what your cost was and some of those towns couldn't afford it last year. So like we made some smart moves, tennis courts, you know what I mean? You know, paying fifteen thousand dollars for brand new courts from, I mean, and some of the assessments of towns, I mean, that is, again, we used two hundred thousand dollars of school choice. So we did smart with it. I know there's been that, we're going to have those discussions about how much choice in the future. I'm sure it's going to come up in whatever sense, but I also want to know that the savings is being sent off to the town. And we did very, we did very conservative with it. And we have to be sure that people don't recognize conservative as savings at the expense of others. Like, you know, we're trying to, and that's, that's where I got. No executive session.
I'll make a motion adjourned.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Good night, Bill.